Good morning, welcome to the Wednesday, January 10th, meeting of the Franklin County Board of Commissioners. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Howard?
Present.
Commissioner Waymire? Chair Vannod?
Present.
Vice Chair Oglesby?
Present.
Commissioner Dunn?
Present.
Thank you. If you would please rise for our pledge allegiance, followed by our invocation from Reverend Mark Hutton.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. Let us pray. Creator of life, who has brought us together by our united concern for our community. We ask that you help us to see that community is another word for your people, that industry is another word for our vocation, that education can be an instrument for bringing both together and all within your providence, Lord. We give you thanks for the care and concern that you show to us and your creation. May your spirit guide us to give as deep of a concern and compassion care. And now, oh God, I ask that you grant these, our faithful and dedicated commissioners, the intelligence that they need, the wisdom to know what is possible, the courage to do what is necessary, the humility to listen, and a spirit of collaboration and cooperation. This we pray in your divine and mighty name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mark.
Appreciate you. And if I could, just a note of privilege that people are invited to our community dinner, second Friday dinner at Westminster Presbyterian Church.
All right, great, thank you very much.
On Friday, this coming Friday. Thank you.
Okay, next, correspondence and organizational business. Before we get to Derrick, fellow commissioners, we have a certificate of appreciation from the Veterans Parade Committee for our contribution to their Veterans Day affairs and that, so I'll make sure you get a chance to look at that. Derrick, anything else?
Yeah, Don Stottlemyre is here to talk about...
Okay.
We talked about this.
Morning, Don.
Morning, commissioners. I missed it, didn't I? I forgot about the statutes of you guys reorganizations on Mondays, I guess I got myself out of the loop on that one. Apologize for not coming in, usually I try to come in. I would be gracious enough to serve on the Solid Waste Authority representing, again, I have served on there for the last seventeen years. In fact, I've got the literature I'll hand out to you. We had a meeting yesterday, I guess hopefully if you appoint me, that'll make what I did yesterday legal. So anyhow, like I said, I'm already on the auditing team assigned to it. We, I'll give you the literature on it. We will be having our annual meeting in May sometime, you'll get an invitation to that. It will be at Paola, it'll be at the new correctional facility, and we'll be having a meeting room and a meal and a tour, private tour of the jail for everybody that shows up to that. So I have here, real quickly, I put together the agenda from yesterday's meeting, it kind of has the statistics for the year of the Solid Waste Authority, how they ended up budget-wise, and things that's going on and what's happened.
Don, you're still, you're not the voting delegate even, you are now?
Yeah. When you redid your voting delegate two years ago, and made me the...
Who was that?
Harold Fuller. And Harold hasn't been to a meeting in three years.
We brought that up at our meeting, and they would like to have a letter from the clerk on Harold that he's no longer a voting member. So we did, that was the discussion. Well, I'm here, real quick, I'm gonna hand out something here. There's a little switch of it, it's hell had due Lake Region, but it has an RC&amp;D instead of the Solid Waste Authority. I mentioned to you guys, I did give my report about the $99,000 grant we got from Rural Development, and it's to help local food and farm market assistance program. And we're having our, we've been meeting with several small groups in the 17 county area, and I'm gonna hand out the literature, we have our first big workshop coming up in Mountain City, which will be on February the 9th, and it lists all the educational things that are trained that will be offered that day down there by us, Project 17, USDA, Kansas State University, and the Lake Region RC&amp;D.
Derrick, is this something we need to put on an agenda in the future to decide officially that, or whatever we might want to do, or?
I'll be done. But like I said, I'd be more than willing to still serve on that board, representing the county. There's no other commissioners on that board. There used to be commissioners at one time, but right now, there's not any commissioners that serve on that board.
No, actually, at our reorganization meeting, I think we appointed a commissioner for that contingent, whether talking to you and see if you were interested in staying on that.
Yeah, I would be.
Didn't we appoint someone for that?
We did, we appointed Commissioner Waymire contingent on talking to Don and seeing if he wanted to continue to fill that spot, so.
I would recommend that you're willing to let Don do it, just make a motion to have Don just like on that. I make a motion that we have Don Stottlemyre replace Commissioner Waymire on that particular board.
Second. Second, okay.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Vannod?
Yes.
Thank you, I'll pay more attention next year when...
All right. Is that it Derrick? Okay, do we have anybody for public comment on just general?
Yes, we... We have Victor Burks is our first one.
And we want to wait till the agenda item for that one to...
Okay, are you both speaking on that, okay.
All right. Next item would be our consent agenda. Consider and approve the commission meeting minutes for January 3rd, the reorganization meeting minutes for January the 8th, the study session minutes for January the 8th, and consider and approve tax change orders in the amount of a negative $32.82. I have a motion for a consent agenda.
Make the motion.
Got a second?
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Chair Vannod?
Yes.
Okay, items of business, our first one is to consider for approval a motion transferring control of the dispatch operations in Franklin County from the Franklin County Sheriff's Office to the Franklin County Board of County Commissioners. Derrick?
As you all are well aware, we had a fairly extensive discussion about this at our study session on Monday. Chief Robbins here, Sheriff Richards could not make it today. He certainly would have liked to, however he is in training. If you have any questions, certainly stand and answer them. If not, then I would recommend that you make a motion transferring control of dispatch with the understanding that those changes within the budget are going to be made at that time, as we explained on Monday. This will actually be an immediate savings. The lieutenant that was being paid out of the 911 fund has already been removed, so there's no increased cost or unplanned for cost, it's just kind of a reallocation of those costs. And so, if you don't have any questions, I would ask for that.
Okay, commissioners, any comments from Monday's meeting?
I don't know if Nick had any further comments. We discussed this quite a while, I'll make a motion to approve this change.
Okay, we have a motion then to move the 911 dispatch from the county sheriff's office to the county board of county commissioners. Second?
Second.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Chair Vannod?
Yes.
Okay, look forward to seeing the gentleman out there involved in that directly, to get the ball rolling and moving and moving forward with this project. I think it'll be a great thing for our citizens in the county. Okay, second item. Mr. Walrod is here for the approval rezoning application 1711-1546.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, commissioners. As you've indicated, we do have a rezoning request to rezone approximately 109 acres from a light industrial zone to the A2 transitional agricultural zone. There is a related matter to this particular item. In fact, this related matter is the one that generated the need to rezone the property. Currently, the county zoning regulations do not have a provision that would allow the quarry operations throughout the county in the light industrial zone. And that's the zoning that's currently in place on the properties that are under discussion this morning. Therefore, the applicant has sought a zoning district which would allow the operations of a rock quarry subject to any conditions that might be imposed by the county commissioners under the provisions of a special use permit. That item will follow your actions on the rezoning matter that's before you. The planning commission did give consideration of this at their last meeting, and by unanimous vote of those present, did approve the rezoning to rezone the property from the light industrial to the A2 transitional zoning district. Keeping in mind that that was the first zoning district that would allow, subject to approval of special use permit, a rock quarry operation. We did give notice, I think, to 14 surrounding property owners. To the best of my knowledge, we had no one that was opposed to the rezoning. In fact, we did receive a letter from the city of Ottawa in support of rezoning the property from the light industrial to the A2 transitional zoning district. I would have nothing further to add on this matter unless any of you have questions.
There's already a quarry operating right in that area, correct?
Yes. The...
The quarry operations that are currently being done are on this 20 acres.
And that 20 acres is already an A2?
No, this is not part of the rezoning. All of this is part of the rezoning. In fact, there's 17 acres on the east side of I-35 that's also part of the rezoning. I think that's shown in one of the exhibits as part of your staff report. But the property shown here that are outlined in red are properties that are going to be subject to the rezoning, there's about 109 acres. There is a special use permit in effect that does permit a rock quarry on all of this property that was owned by Mr. Kaler. Recently, Mr. Kaler has acquired an interest in the remainder of these properties. This is where the gun club was, I think most of you are familiar with that. It did have quarry operations on it quite a number of years ago, prior to the Reclamation Act that was adopted by the state of Kansas. So there wasn't much in the way of any reclamation done out here, but what's being proposed is just to go ahead and rezone all of these other properties that were acquired by Mr. Kaler.
Okay, commissioners, any other questions, comments?
Land on the east side of I-35, did land lock that part?
That was the question that came up at the planning commission hearing. I haven't found anything, it would take a title search, I think, to do that. I haven't found anything that gives them access to that. I'm certain that you don't have to be dropped out of an airplane or shot out of a cannon to get there, but I'm not certain what the legal access would be. It is adjacent to the old railroad right-of-way, and I don't know that they had any particular right to use the railroad right-of-way to access it. And for that reason, it's never been farmed that I'm aware of in the last 30 years, as the fact it's grown up with timber. If you take a look at that area that's north of the church facilities on the east side of I-35, you'll see that that's nothing but just a grown-up timbered area. It's on a pretty sizable hill anyway that drops over to the trail system, so it would be very difficult to get an access road to that property.
Are they planning on quarrying it somehow?
Excuse me?
Are they planning on quarrying that somehow?
No, I don't think that they're, the applicant isn't looking at doing anything on the east side of I-35, but I don't think that there was ever any quarry activities or anything else that was done on that 17 acres that's located on the east side of But it needs to be rezoned because it's obviously not a site for industrial use because of the access issues as well as other problems that we would have with that site.
I'd entertain a motion then for adopting the resolution for approving the rezoning application.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the rezoning application 1711-1546 to rezone approximately 109 acres from L1 light industrial to A2 transitional agricultural.
Mr. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Oglesby?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Vannod?
Yes.
Okay, that takes us then to the next item, which is the approval of a special use permit application 1711-1547 for the operation of a rock quarry in the 109 acres we just approved the rezoning for. Correct?
It's on a portion of that 109 acres. Actually, the boundaries for the special use permit are approximately 63 acres.
Okay.
And I say that because part of this property that you just rezoned has already been approved to a special use permit that was approved in 1999, and again upheld in 2006 for a rock quarry operation, although only a portion of that property is currently being operated as a quarry. The property, again, on the east side of I-35 is not included within the boundaries of the proposed special use permit for the rock quarry operation. That is basically limited to the 63 acres lying south of railroad right-of-way, west of I-35, and north of 15th Street or Marshall Road. And it would include the side part of the old gun club, so most of this was under the gun, the gun club, and that was recently acquired, as I indicated earlier, by Mr. Kaler. And they have filed the application for the special use permit for the rock quarry on that property. Again, this matter was presented to the planning commission at their meeting in December. At that meeting, the planning commission did give consideration to this and have forwarded a recommendation to you for the denial. The staff report included a recommendation for approval based on the criteria that we have in our zoning regulations, which address the procedures that the planning commission and the county commissioners need to review when considering special use permits and rezoning applications, and also the criteria that's set forth in the Supreme Court case of the Golden versus the city of Overland Park. That required, again, that the local governments entertain the criteria that was outlined by the courts when considering special use permits and zoning regulations. We did give notice to 14 surrounding property owners, again. We included, in addition to that, the city and city of Ottawa, as well as the Kansas Department of Transportation because they were an owner of property that was adjacent to the property that was being considered here for the special use permit. We had two property owners that appeared. Most of the testimony they presented to the planning commission involved the existing quarry and not necessarily the special use permit that was on for consideration. And that was the blasting, and well, as some dust control measures associated with the present quarrying activities that are being done on the westerly 20 acres of the property that was approved for the special use permit in 1999. Again, staff has submitted to you a recommendation for the approval. However, there are several options available to you this morning. You could accept the planning commission's recommendation and deny this, but in doing so, I would caution you that you need to make some very, very specific findings, and Derrick can probably advise you more specifically on that matter. There's also, you have the opportunity to override the planning commission decision. We did not receive a protest petition, so a simple majority of the county commissioners would be sufficient to take an action. You have another, which is remand this back to the planning commission with specific direction as to issues that you feel were not addressed, or certain criteria that should be reevaluated, and make that recommendation back to the planning commission. And the next opportunity would be just to merely continue this and direct staff to address certain concerns that you may have regarding the special use permit. I have nothing further. The applicant and his representatives are here to address this matter and perhaps answer any other questions that you have.
Okay. Vic, are you the one signed up to speak, like to come and speak? Okay, please come on. You would introduce yourself and give your name and who you work for and your address?
Yes, sir. Good morning. My name is Vic Burks. I work for Schaefer, Klein &amp; Warren, and we are the civil engineer for the applicant who is here, Mr. Whitaker with Whitaker Aggregates. He's also got his business partners, Angela Hall and Dave McClure, or excuse me, Andrew Whitaker. It's pretty straightforward, it's a rock quarry, and over simplistic concept, it's just a big hole in the ground. But we understand that there's folks in the area in proximity to it, but this has been a rock quarry for as far as I can remember, and I think predates even my birth. And I think that the application that we've got submitted for the property would also include a mitigation plan, which we have not started on yet, but a mitigation and reclamation plan that is part of the requirement to get the permits required by the state. And so, there'll still be a process, if this is approved, whereby we sit down with both the county and city staff of Ottawa to come up with a plan that not only meets the state statute requirements, but also some of the concerns that the residents may have. With that, we'll entertain any questions. I don't know how deep you guys want to delve into this or not, and I don't know if there's anybody else here to speak on it, but...
A couple of questions maybe off the bat. Obviously, there's a lot of restrictions in this special use permit, the ones that are listed there, and some of the complaints or concerns of the neighbors was the testing of the charges and that type of stuff. Can you just briefly maybe speak to the requirements that the people who operate that quarry are under, and what they have to document and not document?
I could generally speak to that, but I don't want to mess it up because I'm not intimately familiar with that. Mr. Whitaker is, he does that on a daily basis, but if...
Sure, I'd like to hear that, if you would, please.
Good morning, I'm Kurt Whitaker with Whitaker Aggregates. To address your question on the blasting, Buckley Powder is a powder sales company that we have used for many years. They've helped us design the blast, there's a lot of scientific data that goes into it anymore about hole size, diameter, stemming of the charge, so that you can have a predicted peak particle velocity when you initiate the charge. We have a neighbor, Southern Star Pipeline, that runs through the property at this area. We have set up seismograph at their pipeline at their request, and we set up a seismograph at the nearest inhabited structure, which will be at this location where the trucking company is located. We have, when we set off our charges, we were well, well below what Southern Star, naturally, a natural gas pipeline, you want to be very careful of those, that they were very satisfied with what we were doing. To give you some history about us, we, this is our eighth rock quarry that we operate, our quarry at Winfield, Kansas. We blast 16 feet away from three high-pressure natural gas lines. I mean, we're very aware of what can happen if something goes wrong. We're very versed about having the right people to design and initiate the charges, so that, you know, there is, you know, a natural gas line, you do not want to rupture one of those. But, I mean, 16 feet away, that's from me to you, and with no incidents in years. Have any other questions?
Gentlemen, either one of them?
Is it about the hours of, that you do the blasting?
Daylight hours only, and Monday through Friday, obviously. We will blast on weekends.
And only daylight hours?
Yes, we're mandated by law, you cannot shoot at dark. If you have something go wrong with a shot, I mean, you're loading and a storm comes up, you have to back away from the shot, guard it, and you may babysit it all night, have personnel on-site so that the shot can be safely discharged. You're not allowed to shoot at dark because obviously, in case something was going wrong, you couldn't tell that.
Do you have a warning signal or something for you?
When you load a shot, you have a horn that you'll set off like three minutes prior to the shot going off, but before that goes on, we have personnel that covers the road gates at the two locations coming in here, access to properties, this one is shut, obviously. And you'll also have people out on the road, just for the sake of safety, you wait for the road to turn before you set off a shot. You don't want people driving by, plus the thing that could be alarming to the driver of the car going by hearing the shot. Shot will last about, depending on how many holes, from a half a second to two and a half seconds, because your charges are timed at seven millisecond delays from shot to shot, so that you can achieve the vibration, the minimal vibration that you desire. You won't set off 100 holes at the same time. There'll be seven tenths of a millisecond delay from hole to hole, so it's kind of a "pffft" as it goes, instead of just one loud bang.
What is the typical number of charges you would do in a day or week, or whatever?
We set off, Buckley Powder set off the first shot about a month ago for us at this location, and we're still crushing through it. And opening up the quarry again, you know, getting a customer base to coming back to it, the county is, came by several times for rock for Franklin County, and we're getting to where we're going to have it manned all the time now. The, but, you know, just, it's slow at start, you know, and also in January, you know, the weather the last couple of weeks hasn't been very good for selling rock when it's zero or so.
At your peak times, what would be your timing between blast and shots, probably?
Couple of weeks at a time, if not longer.
Right.
Yeah.
What's the, what would be the industry standards we're monitoring? I understand you guys monitor your own. Is the industry standard that you monitor your own, or you have a third-party verification?
We can monitor our own. I had Buckley Powder set off our first shots, just to make sure that, you know, give us a pattern, hole width, diameter, to what they felt was going to be suitable for being next to the pipeline. We do our own shooting at locations, and they shoot for us at other locations. We have some locations that are predominantly wet holes, if you drill a hole, the water fills up in them. I'll let them load those because they can pump a slurry mixture down it, which is more economical for them to do than us to do.
What's the overall business plan of this particular site, then? I know the previous site that you're at now, when, without operation for a while, and now it's back in operation, is the intent of the business plan to continue operation within this site, or as needed, or?
No, we're going to man this full-time, as all of our other seven quarries, this is our eighth quarry, all but one, our start quarry is an honor system quarry. This is our eighth quarry, our all but one, our Stark Quarry is an owner system quarry. There's our manned quarries Monday through Friday, and some of our west quarries are Monday through Saturday.
You don't anticipate that you would use this for a couple of years and then take several years of break and then come back?
No, because Franklin County has a good market area. You're close to a growing city. Some of our, well, our remote quarry, our most, smallest quarry is Stark, Kansas, and as I said, it's an owner system quarry. Will come in, crush rock, and the crusher may leave for a year or so as you're selling all the stockpiles. And that's predominantly what I do with, out of this eight quarries, we have three portable plants and two stationary plants. The ones at Cedarville and Winfield Quarry, they never move. They're there, I mean, they're made to the ground. The others will move, crush up rock, come back a year or so later as the piles, you know, warrant.
The complaints we had about the asphalt plant coming on the south side of Fifteenth Street was Fifteenth Street is supposedly a gateway to the City of Ottawa, and that was kind of an unsightly, I guess, activity at that side. Is there anything that the rock quarry is going to do to improve the site on the north side of Fifteenth Street?
Before this area here, you have no reclamation plan. What I would love to propose in doing with Vic and the city and the county is putting a berm along the road and not just push up a pile or dress it, plant it, seed it if a person deems necessary, ceder trees or whatever kinds of shrubbery, because that was one of the things that the zoning meeting here a couple of weeks ago was gateway to Ottawa. And I mean, there is nothing there now. You've all been out there and seen the old scale houses, looks like an old prairie you wouldn't let your dog live in. As this gets done and approved, I'd like to move over to the old gun club scale house, which is aesthetic to look at. This, it needs to be taken to the landfill, but for the period of time this is what we're using. Should this get approved, I'd like to put a new set of scales here, use the office, put a berm, and that's something that can be decided through the city, what they think to say, but I'm thinking six to eight foot tall, dress it, seed it, and make it look, because that was one of the concerns of gateway to city. As far as the people saying the asphalt plant was unsightly, that's kind of a difference of opinion because I've got two asphalt plants and it's just a way for me to do business. There's nothing any different than saying the guy on the north side of the road, I think his trucks are unsightly.
Thank you very much, I guess.
Any other questions?
Okay. All right, Larry?
Larry, was there any specific reasons why they denied it? They give reasons for denying this?
There was one and only one reason for denying it, and that dealt with the fact that they didn't think that this would enhance the gateway to the city that had been addressed in the city's comprehensive plan. There were no other findings, and that is an issue that Derek may choose to address, but there was no other findings other than that it just wouldn't enhance the gateway.
Yet the city has no problem with this.
The city was not opposed to it. If they'd been opposed to it, I'm certain we would have heard from them, but they did give us a letter of support for the agricultural zoning district, knowing that the purpose for that rezoning was to allow for the consideration of a special use permit for a rock quarry.
Larry and I spoke with the city planning director and the city manager, and the city, the city commission does not object to this. They pointed out several differences between the quarry and the asphalt plant. First and foremost, as we all realize, this area has been a quarry for decades. This is just an expansion of that, and frankly, it's an expansion moving outward away from the City of Ottawa. The second thing we all talked about, and as Mr. Whitaker just referred to, we are going to put a reclamation plan in place, and so this location will actually be more slightly after the fact. They've done a fantastic job of working with Larry and I. I think they've indicated a willingness, within reason, to do what they can in order to make this a more slightly area. And so I, as Larry said, the city had every opportunity to object. They weren't at the planning commission meeting. They're not here today. I don't see that as a valid reason. As Larry pointed out, and I reviewed this thoroughly, it does not run afoul of any of the golden factors. It is ties perfectly into our comprehensive plan. Indeed, there's a quarry there now. I mean, this is a valid use, and legally, I think you would be in a worse spot if you were to deny this without any valid reason for doing so. And I do want to state, our planning commission, they are a group of volunteers, and that is a thankless job, and it is a job that I greatly appreciate. And as a general rule, I think we've got great planning commissioners, and I think they do a fantastic job. Having said that, they don't always get it right, and this is a scenario where I don't think they got it right. And so my recommendation would be that we overrule the planning commission. Now, if there are additional conditions that you as the board feel like maybe we ought to look at, now would be a great time to have that discussion, or you can direct Larry and I to have that discussion with them, or we've given you a resolution that has fifteen specific conditions in it, you can approve that today, and then we can start working with them on that reclamation plan and get this ball rolling. You certainly do have options, but I, in no event would I recommend upholding the planning commission's recommendation because I don't think it was based on a valid legal conclusion.
Yeah, in our packet, we have that special use permit, those fifteen items that are on there, that they're subject to the conditions, and so they're pretty consistent there. Start with those right there and go into this page right here.
These conditions, Mr. Chairman, are very, very similar to those that were imposed on Penny operations up on Tennessee. That was the last quarry that we've actually approved through the provisions of our special use permit under the current zoning regulations. And these conditions that were recommended here based on the seven findings that are also included in that draft resolution, I think are very similar to previous actions that were done by Franklin County regarding quarry operations.
Any other questions, commissioners? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the special use permit application seventeen eleven dash fifteen forty-seven or a motion to deny it.
I'd like to offer an additional condition if it would be available, that being the non-operational use in excess of five years would require them to come back for a renewed or a new special use permit. You understand that? If they fail to use that property as a rock quarry for a period of five, five years, they would need to come back and get a new special use permit. That, we're moving that project forward so that it's...
But would that put an undue burden on somebody to come in to erect a permanent quarry and invest in it, not knowing that they're only going to get five years out of it? It would be a question that, you know, is, that's like, well, shoot, we're not...
No, they can continue to use it.
Don't...
If they just failed to, if they fail to use it for five years, they just abandon it.
Don't we have other quarries in the area that has special use permit that's not under that stipulation, right?
We do, and it's not. I mean, the reason you don't put abandonment provisions typically on special use permits for rock quarries is just the nature of the business. I mean, oftentimes, you will crush a lot of rock and then, you know, it maybe takes a while to sell it off, or you won't crush for a long time. I think it's certainly a respectable thought. The other thing, though, that I think the board should consider is there is a portion of this, a large portion, that is an existing quarry operating on a special use permit that does not have that provision. And so you would effectively be saying, well, part of it, you've got this five-year abandonment, the other part of it, you don't. I think that's something the board ought to consider.
I don't...
And certainly, as Mr. Whitaker or Vic has commented, now would be the time to have the discussion.
Sure.
Vic Burks with Schaefer, Klein &amp; Warren. I would just caution against that because I think the whole purpose of a special use permit or conditional use permit is if at any one time, one of those conditions is not met or there's an issue, you can review that permit. So in a year, eighteen months, or five years, six years, you always have that option of starting the process to say there's an issue out there. And I think, I think Mr. Brown's point that, you know, it's an investment, it's a business, and so that time horizon out there puts that out there to where, well, you know, we're halfway through, we're going to have to come back forward, and you just never know what's going to happen in the future. I think with those conditions on there, I think that would give a reasonable measure of control and oversight on the county's part, but again, that's just, that's my opinion.
Yeah, I'm not talking about a five-year total amount of time. I was talking about if you just walked away from it and left it for, without use for five years and then, you know, things change in the timeframe, that's all I'm saying.
And so in other words, to make sure we're all on the same page, we're not talking about cap on the time in which you're allowed to do this. It's more if you don't blast for five years, if you don't sell rock for five years, if that site literally sits vacant for five years and nothing has happened, we would consider that abandoned based on that.
No, I've got no issue with that because like I said, our other places will have a crusher come in, we'll crush for three or four, six months, whatever the time and the stockpiles allow, and then the crusher will leave until, as at our Garnet Quarry, which Franklin County comes to a lot, we're going to be out of rock there by spring. We're going to mobilize our plant that's crushing currently in Mound City, take it back to Garnet, crush for three or four months, and then it'll probably go to our Centerville location. And that was our plan with this, is you crush up your base rock, your clean rock, your products, and you fill up, because you're not going to operate the crusher, what I will say, fifty weeks a year, five days a week. We're probably going to operate three or four months, fill up the piles, let the scale operator sit there, and as the piles are diminished, and then come back in whenever it's necessary. Just want to be clear about that. People think they're going to see a rock crusher running all the time, that's not the case. I wish it was the case. I mean, rock sales would be really good, but...
Any other commissioners feel inclined to add that in there or not want to add it in there, have a problem with it?
I would just add that the current regulations in the, our zoning regulations actually apply that a one year to all special use permits, that if they have not been activated or they become inactive, there's no activity associated with it, they doesn't cease to exist one year, and it's automatically considered vacated and abandoned, and any further use would have to come back with one exception, and that is rock quarries. And that was because of the nature of the business. But on the other hand, that was a very limited one year. The five years that has been suggested here could be a very reasonable condition because if there has been no, absolutely no activity for the sale of the material, crushing of the material, you know, they, there are several different stages that you go through when you're operating a quarry, so that might not be an unreasonable condition.
It might be one that would be a little difficult to, I mean, all they got to do is bring a truck in one day and do something and say, well, we were there, we did this, and, you know what I'm saying? It could be a, so what is abandonment? Did the fact that you came in and mowed the grass or you came in and opened the gate and did paperwork, is that an abandonment or not an abandonment, you know? I mean, I don't want to get us into some litigation, but I mean, I'm like, Rick, it's not a bad idea as far as a way, it's like you're going to abandon it, you know, and do that, but...
Something that I would ask the board to consider, this isn't the only rock quarry in Franklin County. There might be quarries that emerge, quarries might change hands. Certainly, Mr. Whitaker's been very generous and indicated that he doesn't have a problem with that. The thing I would ask the board to consider is if we put this condition on his quarry moving forward, if I'm an opponent of any other quarry, I'm going to be in here telling this board, if you guys put that five-year abandonment provision on the Whitaker quarry, we want you to do it on all of them, and that's fine if you're willing to do that, but that's not supported by the law. I mean, there's a reason why courts haven't enforced abandonment provisions on quarries, and it's the nature of the business. I don't think five years is an unreasonable timeline, and if the board was willing to put that on every single quarry, then that's certainly a board decision, but be prepared to do so because you're likely to hear that moving forward anytime someone objects for a rock.
And I withdraw, but my, my whole point was I would hate to see the project or this particular incident be drawn out for fifty, sixty years when we have the opportunity of looking at this reclamation and making the project in sight a lot better and...
And Commissioner Oglesby, I want to be clear, I'm not offering an opinion as the administrator. I am more making sure you all understand what your options are and what the potential ramifications might be. Five years is reasonable, and it's not hard to at some point within five years sell a ton of rock and keep it active. So certainly, understandable and respectable condition, just be prepared to potentially do it for all of them.
I think I heard Rick say that he'd be okay with, without that, if that's, I'm not going to word your mouth.
Not necessary because the rest of the board doesn't have any restrictions like that. Or if they're taking any action on this item, I think, I'd hate to go against the planning commission recommendation because they are a volunteer group, they did a great job, but my big question was, the side along Fifteenth Street, that's been addressed, so I got to make a motion to approve, override the denial by the planning commission and approve this request.
Did you have a motion then to approve the special use permit application seventeen eleven fifteen forty-seven? All right. Second?
Second.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Chair of the note?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Larry?
Could we take a five-minute recess here?
I'm going to assume my fellow commissioners will go along with that. We'll take a five-minute recess and reconvene at nine twenty-three and like to, or nine twenty, let's make it nine, let's just make it nine twenty-five. And I'd also like to publicly welcome the Whitaker Aggregates to our county and look forward to seeing a good business partner with that and trust that you'll be a good one to work with.
Thank you very much. We'll get with you about the reclamation plan, and I think you'll all be very pleased with what we come up with and make everyone satisfied about the gateway to Ottawa. Thank you very much.
Okay, we're recessed until nine twenty-five. Okay, the meeting back in session again? Next item on our agenda? Approval of zoning application seventeen oh nine dash fifteen thirty-four. Larry?
Mr. Chairman, as you've indicated, this is a request to rezone approximately ten acres from an A1 to an RE residential estate zoning district. The purpose for the rezoning is to create a ten-acre tract that would be granted to a son to build a new residence. This matter is also considered by the planning commission at their meeting in December, and they have made a recommendation to the county commissioners to approve the rezoning request to rezone this ten acres from the A1 Agricultural Zoning District to the RE Residential Estate Zone, based on the fact that this is consistent with the county's comprehensive plan as well as the provisions for reviewing rezoning applications pursuant to the Golden Case. Staff would recommend then that you accept the planning commission's recommendation... Staff would recommend then that you accept the planning commission's recommendation and rezone the property from A-one to RE, and direct staff to amend the official county zoning map accordingly.
Okay. Any comments or questions for Larry?
We do a lot of these, and this one doesn't seem anything out of the ordinary. I'll make, no one else has anything, I'll make a motion to approve rezoning application seventeen oh nine fifteen thirty-four.
Okay, is there a second?
Commissioner Dunn? Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Oglesby? Chair of note.
Yes.
All right, next item, Larry, final plat, MLH Estates subdivision.
This is somewhat related to the same issue that you have just considered. The property owner has decided that it was time to divide the properties up somewhat equally to settle the estate for the future, wherein he would be granting various parcels out to the family members. So, he has decided to submit a subdivision plat. That plat does not require a public hearing, it's a simple matter of being what we call inclusive subdivision, wherein there are new, no new roads being created, they all have direct frontage onto a state or county maintained road system, and otherwise comply with the minimum standards of our zoning. The planning commission also considered this matter at the same time that they heard the rezoning request. In fact, the property that was just rezoned is lot number four of this proposed subdivision. Again, we would ask that the county commissioners accept the recommendation of the planning commission and endorse the subdivision plat, accepting any easements or rights of ways that have been identified on the face of the plat. I would have nothing further to add unless any of you have questions.
Okay. Any questions, comment, do we make a motion? Okay, we have a motion then to the final plat of MLHS Estates. Second?
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn? Chair of note.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I have the final plat here, but you can endorse that at the end of the meeting.
Okay. Next item then would be items number six, rezoning application seventeen eleven dash fifteen forty-eight.
This again is a request to rezone properties from an A-one agricultural zoning district that consists of approximately forty-five acres. As noted in the staff report, this is located on the north side of Neosho Road and west of, of Tennessee. The property is somewhat unique in its configuration. The alignment of Neosho Road in this instance was shifted from the section line approximately six hundred feet to the south, then ex, then extended, and it left behind then an area that had previously been intended to be part of the, the road system. So you'll see that on the exhibit that's a part of your staff report. The applicant is requesting to divide this forty-five acres to sell the existing residence, and then he wants to build a new residence on the westerly half of that forty-five acre. So, in fact, that is forty-five acres, the minimum being forty acres for the A-one zone. However, in dividing that, the two resulting parcels will be approximately twenty acres in size, and therefore can go to the A-two transitional agricultural zone, and that was the recommendation of the, the planning commission, recognizing that in order to satisfy that condition, the applicant would have to get the property surveyed to make certain and ensure that he has at least twenty acres in each of those tracts, so they would be consistent then with the requirement of the A-two zoning district. The planning commission has made a recommendation for approval, and staff recommends that you accept that recommendation, rezone the property from A-one to A-two, and direct staff to amend our official county zoning map accordingly.
Okay, I'm very familiar with that properties in my neighborhood, and it has always amazed me that sometime we have county roads that aren't on the section lines.
Yeah, this is a very, very unique situation, and in fact, it was thought to be a minimum maintenance road, but it took a, three weeks to research that out, and we never found that there was ever an action other than an action officially by the county commissioners adjusting that road further to the south, and then bringing it back to the, the section line, but that was, that was the only action we ever found, it was not acted on as a minimum maintenance road.
Goes back to the days of Mirers Park down there.
Yeah.
Okay, I look for a recommenda, a motion then to follow that recommendation?
I'll make a motion, we approve rezoning application seventeen eleven dash fifteen forty-eight.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn? Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Chair of note.
Yes.
Okay. Next item then? Zoning application seventeen eleven dash fifteen forty-four.
This was filed by the Chisims, and it is a request to rezone approximately seven, or sixteen and three-quarters acres from an A-one to an RE residential estate zoning district. The purpose of this was to satisfy a couple things. One is to allow for the sale of approximately fifty acres, and the second is to correct the situation wherein the property for the, that includes the sixteen acres was divided out separately several years ago without the benefit of rezoning and/or compliance with our subdivision regulations. So it is curing an existing violation that was something that was done a few years ago, but at the same time, it's bringing this totally into compliance with the county's current zoning regulations and comprehensive plan. The planning commission did consider this matter also at their meeting in December, and have submitted a recommendation to the county commission for the approval of the rezoning, to rezone the approximately sixteen and three-quarters acres from an A-one zone to the RE residential estate zone, and direct staff to amend our official zoning map accordingly.
Okay, any questions on this one?
Chairman, I make a motion that we approve application seventeen eleven dash fifteen forty-four, rezone approximately sixteen point seven-six acres from A-one agricultural zoning district to the RE residential estate.
Is there a second?
Commissioner Dunn? Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Chair of note.
Yes.
Okay, our next item then for approval, final replat of lots eight and nine of Shawnee Estates, phase one.
Several years ago, the, the applicant did have a subdivision that was approved, and in that subdivision for phase one, he had lots eight and nine. These were fairly small lots that fronted out onto a county road, but they did not sell. For some reason, the internal road system was paved, and all the other lots utilized that paved road system except these two lots. They also then dumped out onto K-33 Highway, which was also paved, and it goes north-south into Wellsville. But those two lots, for some reason, since they fronted out onto a gravel road, never sold and were not developed. The applicant in this case does have a buyer, but that buyer would prefer to have this as a single lot, and therefore we, it takes a modification because of the easements that were established as a part of the original subdivision, would have to be abandoned, and the proper way to do that would be to do that through the replating process. So that's what the applicant is requesting today, is to approve a replat of those two lots, lots eight and nine of phase one of the Shawnee Estates subdivision, and to create a single lot for the combination of the, the two lots that previously existed. The planning commission has reviewed this and are satisfied that it does meet the county's zoning subdivision regulation and would be consistent with the comprehensive plan, and forward a recommendation to the county commissioners to accept the plat and any easements or rights of ways that are shown on the face of that plat.
Not that they have any bearing on particularly on this decision, but the possibility of having an access to K-33, is that a possibility, or will have to come off of Shawnee?
They will have to come off of Shawnee.
Shawnee, right, okay. Any other questions, comments, or looking for a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the final replat of lots eight and nine of Shawnee Estates, phase one, and also the replat of lot one of Shawnee Estates.
Is there a second?
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn? Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Chair of note.
Yes.
Okay, Larry, thank you very much.
Well, thank you, and I have a, a couple of these that we'll have you sign out for the meeting.
Okay. Our next item then is consider approval of the names presented for inclusion on the new tourism board. Susan Rader, Susan?
Good morning, gentlemen. Well, as we jump into twenty-eight AM, I'm really excited to move forward with the tourism board, and that's why I'm here today, to answer any questions. I am, I did reach out to all the individuals that were listed as committee members and presented to you today, and I do have Sarah Clam, who is the owner of the Milestone Event Center in Wellsville, and Diana with the Historical Society, so they were kind enough to join me this morning, so if you have any questions?
There's nine members on this list, is that correct?
Well, myself included, so...
Is that, is that the number we came up with, or is there a...
Well, it'd be one, two, three, four, five, six, seven...
I didn't know if that would fill this up or not, if that was my question basically, is that?
Yes.
That was the number we came up with, that finally decided on?
Because according to, and I think I have a copy of those regulations, we had changed that, you had voted on that prior to this time to reduce the number from twelve to ten, is that correct? I, I think I've got that resolution, if you need to see that today.
Well, in our reorganization meeting also, Susan and I was, will be serving on the board too.
Welcome.
So I don't know if you're counting me on that nine?
I am counting you as one of my ten. And I appreciate it.
And then will these terms be staggered at some point, or will we come up with some, maybe?
Yeah, and the purpose of today was to get the names in front of you.
Sure.
But yeah, we'll come up with a staggered term list, and I still need to meet with Susan at the board, and certainly wanna emphasize just the purpose of the board, the nature of the board. This will be the last discussion that we have, but more than anything, wanted to, you know, you see the names, you have any issues or questions, we discuss those, and if you're okay with it, then we'll proceed forward and start establishing some...
Well, and you gentlemen know better than anyone, nature of boards, people come on, people go off, and so there's sometime a natural process in addition to whatever kind of terms we work out.
Sure.
And, and, you know, depending on the length of time involved, there are some individuals who may have to opt out, or, you know, because of their schedule.
I know the previous board met monthly, as probably, is that what you're thinking now, or?
I think it would be a great start, I, I think a lot can be accomplished via email, because this board is going to be a board that offers information and assistance, and we would still need to present things to the commissioners, I think a lot could be done via email without having to have extensive meetings. That was one of the things I did share with the members that I contacted, that this hopefully wouldn't be excessive amount of their time, because they're all busy professionals.
Questions for Susan? Would your two ladies like to have a comment or not, or introduce themselves, say?
Sure.
Come on up, ladies, at least introduce yourself and let us thank you for volunteering.
Well, I kinda twisted their arms a little bit. I'm Diana Star-Synic Dean, I am actually in the process of taking over for Deborah Barker as the executive director of the Historical Society. I've been with the museum for almost four years, served on the Historical Society board before that. About seventy-five percent of our museum, people coming in off the street to see the museum are actually from outside the county, so tourism is really important to us, and I recognize how our opportunities to promote ourselves have changed dramatically in the last decade with online and social media, and I'm really excited about being able to do that for the county, we have a lot to offer here, both rural and in-town opportunities, and so I'm really excited to be able to help promote that and to offer whatever I can to this committee in order to make Franklin County as visible as possible.
Okay, thank you.
Morning, I'm Sarah Clam, I'm the owner of Milestone Events in Wellsville, downtown Wellsville, my husband and I bought the building a little over a year ago, got it renovated, and we've been open for about a year. I'm also a realtor with Leighton Real Estate, Wellsville graduate, Ottawa University graduate. One of the reasons I went ahead and allowed my arm to be twisted was that through Milestone, I'm seeing that, that there's an opportunity, probably about half of our business has been from people who are outside of the Wellsville community and often Franklin County, from surrounding counties, and so another opportunity for people to realize that there is more to life than ends on the Johnson County line has, has been a benefit, so I'm looking forward to this as well.
Thank you, sir. Okay.
So, what I would look for or ask for today would be a motion approving these names. I think Susan's done a terrific job of getting them together, I'm frankly, just looking at this spread, I, I think it's fantastic, and I'm, I'm excited about her getting some help and all the blood and brain power there, I, I just think we'll see some great ideas come out of this, so I'm certainly excited and appreciate Susan taking the initiative to put all of this together.
Okay. Need a motion then to approve the list of volunteers? Might like to make that motion?
I'll make the motion that we approve the names presented to us for the new tourism board.
Second.
Commissioner Dunn? Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Oglesby? Chair of note.
Yes.
Thank you, Susan. Thank you, gentlemen, I appreciate it.
I'm trying to think three steps ahead of it.
I'm excited to be able to bring some, some things to you in the, in the future, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a great group of people.
Good.
Appreciate your compliments, thank you.
We'll let all of them know that we appreciate the fact that they're stepping up to do this. Okay, staff reports?
I have anything for the board at this time.
Okay. Anybody else back there? Janet? Okay. Commissioner comments? You wanna go first, Rick?
Sure. Monday night I attended Winnebago City Council meeting, and they had their organizational meeting before their regular meeting, and they swore in three new council members. They also elected a new council president. They're gonna put an asphalt walking track up around the old football field on the dirt track, they discussed that, and they talked about the cost of that project and how they were gonna look at financing their part of the cost. Let's see, they had some damage on the west side of the city hall, they talked about the repairs on that, and what they were gonna do with that. They discussed how they're gonna do their streets, getting them repaired and bladed and so forth, because one of the, the subject that usually done that is now a new member on the council, so they talked about what their options are there. And they also passed an ordinance that amended the utility rates, they raised the utility rates. So, that's pretty much that one. Then last night I attended Richmond City Council, they also... They also had their organizational meeting, and they had a, a new mayor and two new council members join. And they discussed credit card. They're going to go, they've been using cash to pay bills and do a lot of numerous things, and they had three or four bids from different credit cards, and they discussed that, which one they wanted to go with. And talked about their code enforcement. They've had some real issues with code enforcement on how they're going to handle that. They don't have a code enforcement officer. They discussed about what it would take to get one so they could enforce some of their city codes. And that was that.
Okay. Mr. Oglesby?
I, I attended the City of Ottawa's reorganization study session Monday. As many of you know, Mike Skidmore is elected mayor, elect Robinson. They approached him, and they had their study session. One of the key things I pulled out of their study session was a report from their utilities director that due to the hurricanes and storms that have taken place, there's a considerable backlog of utility poles that, that are in a holding pattern, I guess. So there may be some setbacks, I guess, they said, in trying to get some of the utility poles that are necessary for proximity park. And they're, they're trying to push that as far forward as they can. I think he also indicated that they have received or are going to soon receive the additional lot generation that will be added as a substation for that, to that park. And then Tuesday morning, I attended the Ottawa Chamber of Commerce Board meeting. A lot of discussion. One of the things reported there is they're very close to making a decision on a manager hire for their office manager, a front desk position. John, an FCDC director, James will be getting together and making a decision very soon, which I think will be a good thing, to get that back to full operation. And a lot of discussion about budget. A lot of discussion continues about the office space up above and, and what to do with it. They're now paying utilities for that and whether or not it's advantageous to figure out a way to winterize the facility or not. So they're looking at ways to try to minimize their costs and still provide the service. So that was the, some of the main things. And then they provided a set of goals for the director that the board and the director would try to meet for twenty eighteen, so that's it.
Okay, Laura? All right. Was that the Elizabeth Leighton Center meeting last Wednesday, I think? Phone with Rick, and very interesting information there. Monday, I went to the Rantoul City Council Reorganization Meeting, and our distinction, clerk was there. Thank you very much, Janet, for helping. They have all, all new council members and new mayor, so it was a complete sweep of the slate. And definitely it was an experience to see that get off the launchpad and on its way. Then yesterday, I attended Wellsville Chamber meeting and discussed some of their upcoming ideas. And again, I think recruiting members, active members, and trying to get their year going good. Looks like our next meeting is January the seventeenth, next Wednesday, and we also have a joint luncheon on that date. If there's any, nothing else, why consider a motion for adjournment?
Make the motion.
Second.
All in favor? We are adjourned.